Hi Dwight.
Hi Eli. I'm turning my camera off, good to see you. Okay, so you're slightly in the view.
So I'll see.
There we go. I have seven relatives, but they're out of camera range.
I can't hear you Dwight. Do you have your volume on?
I can hear you Dwight. I can't.
Okay, there we go. Can you hear me now?
I got you.
Okay, Eli, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now Eli?
Eli. Sound check, Eli.
Oh, sorry, I didn't have my speaker on. Can I, can you hear me?
Dwight can hear you?
I can.
Okay, good.
I'm gonna go unmute the next eight minutes.
Okay, yeah, for summary, I had my volume off, so I saw your lips moving, but I couldn't hear you, so.
It's being recorded.
Can anyone hear me who's logged in at this point?
Dwight can hear you.
Excellent, thank you Dwight. I'm using the phone and the computer, so just wanted to make sure I was connected.
Right, and I can see that you have the computer connection with your mic off, but you got your phone. You're the caller and user number two.
Am I number two? Let's see.
Cause you probably start with eight four five.
That is me, yeah.
Hey Steve.
Yes sir.
You got my email about maybe just about three minutes of comments?
Well, you said four, which means eight, and so.
Steve, I'm glad you're willing to let the long-winded guy make a last guess.
I just want you to know that we'll give you four, because from this point forward, you only get three.
I got it. And the other comment is, it's up to you to limit any other comments by folks afterwards, because long-winded comments and comments can be embarrassing, so you know, the sooner I can get out of there, the better.
Well, how about this, if I see you fall out of your chair, then I'll ask people to stop making laudatory comments.
Okay, we've got a signal.
Okay.
Thank you.
There we go.
I carry your keyboard down really fast.
That's me.
Oh.
That's Gabe, I forgot to unmute.
Yeah, that is fast, I don't take that fast.
Well, I guess while I'm on here, do I have Steve? Is Steve on? Steve, can you hear me? Mayor Steve?
Yeah, Gabe, I'm caller number two, the eight four five number.
Okay, I just wanted to throw out there, depending on how things go tonight, with the item number two, appointment of a new member, if the candidate has and is prepared to read it, should that appointment move forward, and because of the whole technology process, we never really read the, you know, raise your right hand and repeat after me style, so I was just suggesting to Mr. Pompous, if he's lucky enough to get that appointment tonight, if we move forward, then he could just read it aloud.
I think that's satisfactory.
I'll let you take the lead on that, when the time comes.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, we're about, we're a little after six, so we'll wait just another minute. I assume another couple of folks are likely to call in, so thank you for your patience. Hopefully, when I turn my head, you don't lose my voice. I'm using my phone, my computer. Windows are open, so hopefully it's not a disruptive service. All right, I see a fair number of folks, so I will call this meeting to order. Thank you very much for attending the regular city council meeting, July 14th, 2020. So we are now called to order, and we will stand for, and just because of the awkwardness, just say the pledge of allegiance to yourselves. I don't know how it comes across when all of us are talking, so please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance. I pledge states American and to the republic for which it stands, one nation. Thank you very much. All right, we'll work on that one. So we didn't have a closed session to adjourn to, so we're moving on to a discussion, or rather, an approval of our agenda. We have a consent agenda that's rather full, and a discussion action item agenda that's rather full. Any comments from the council regarding the agenda, its order, or inclusion of topics?
I move to approve, Dwight moves to approve.
A second, Jack.
Okay, we've got a first and a second. Do we have any public comments regarding the agenda? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we have our agenda, thank you very much, and we will do roll call for discussion action items, and for approval of the consent agenda, just because we want to make sure that we've got everybody. So Gabe, if you don't mind being ready for roll call for the vote for each of the consent and discussion items, that would be great. So at this point, we'll move into council reports and committee assignments. Let's start with Mr. Grover.
Okay, pass the budget for the hazardous material response authority, and that's all I did for council assignments. I did attend a presentation about sovereignty and government-to-government meetings with Easton Lawton today, that was online. It was very informative. It kind of was a review of a lot of policy stuff. I did it at HSU with Native American water rights and things along that line. Jared Hoffman, I haven't heard from him. I'm still keeping in contact with him, because we're gonna get another bill coming up here in the state representatives, and that's probably gonna start affecting us at the local level at this point, and once we get it together. And so that's about it for now.
David, with that government-to-government meeting, I was hoping to attend but wasn't able to. By any chance, did they record that meeting?
Yes.
They did? And are you gonna send out a link to that recording, or do you know how to access that recording?
Yeah, or I could just send you the email. It was pretty established, so.
Okay, I've got that. I'll reach out if I need to, thank you very much.
Okay, no problem.
Mr. Miller, report.
Turn the mic on, and let me bring up my minutes to refresh my memory here. We had some standard power procurement updates, and noticing that we were starting to have contracts with some local fairly large-scale solar vendors that, they're not nearly as big as elsewhere in California, but RCEA has several programs to encourage solar development in Humboldt County, and they're moving forward with two contracts of about a megawatt apiece, which is about twenty times bigger than the usual house. So they're small in a global sense, but fairly large project for Humboldt County. We also had a request from the manager, or the owner of the Blue Lake biomass plant, to have them start producing for us, and this was not really possible, because we still have a contract with the Fairhaven Plant, even though they're not operating at the moment, to continue at least through the next couple of years. So there were some other agreements, to have requests for proposals, there's some bioenergy projects. There was an announcement that the airport microgrid is moving forward, it should be, they're gonna remove some trees and install, and it was extremely lively discussion, in that one of the counselors, one of the directors was objecting to it and thought this was a liberal plant, and the other directors and several members of the staff said, nope, this is the real thing, and this is what we care about. So it was a lively twenty-minute discussion, and I personally appreciated it, and since I announced to the staff that this was going to be my last RCEA session. So it was basically a good meeting, summary, a surprise meeting, in that RCA, the staff themselves are fully behind doing anything they can to help support racial justice. That's my report.
I just wanted to add too, I'm going to be going, now that Dwight's not going to be home, and I'm gonna be going until they tell me not to, so I plan on attending those.
Very good. Good. Mr. Davies?
I don't have much to report. I did attend the same online seminar that David attended this afternoon. It was very informative, historical, Native American, US government, policy, et cetera. Unfortunately, it seemed like he ran out of time at the end, and the government-to-government section of the meeting was not very fleshed out. I don't know if he had more to say, but he only had an hour, I guess, so. And it is gonna be, it is gonna be recorded, so if you're interested in seeing that, I don't know how to get to it, so. Nothing else.
Sorry, anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay. Mr. West?
I have a very little report. This is, HCOG was for the most part a budget meeting, and it went back over a lot of the things that we've been talking about in terms of the corridor project, the last chance grade, and really, I found there was very little update, so they're still in the process of years down the road getting these things done, but hopefully, some new information will come up at the next meeting, even though the next meeting, which is this week, has been canceled, so I'll report again later about whatever happened. But I did have, Mayor did have a question. We skipped the approval of the minutes, or did I miss it?
We skipped it. Thank you for that. I don't know how that happened.
Okay, I'm also, that's my own report.
Yeah, we approved the agenda, David.
Yeah, I think frogged, and I'll get back to that. So I attended the Humboldt Transit Authority meeting, and just because of the time of year, we also had budget discussions. We approved the budget. Humboldt Transit is doing everything in their power to maintain operations. Ridership is low because of people not traveling, and because of capacity of buses having to leave every other seat vacant. They put in extensive measures to keep the drivers as protected as possible. They wrestled with free ridership early on, and that resulted in a lot of folks seeking refuge on the bus, and so they would ride for hours at a time, and so they had to reinstate fare box, and so they've really been doing a really good job at managing transit, but it's been pretty challenging with COVID-19. So we did approve a budget, though, and staying in the black for another year. And then I also attended the Redwood Region Economic Development Commission, and we too had a presentation on racial justice from Black Humboldt, with lots of training opportunities, lots of information that is available to all kinds of governing bodies. So that was a nice addition to what's normally a very sort of spreadsheet business kind of discussion, so, but Redwood Region Economic Development also has had a significant drop in activity, fewer loans, fewer businesses, starting obviously with things shutting down, so also looking to sort of trim activities for the duration of the downturn in new business loans and that sort of thing. So those are my two reports. At this point, thank you, Jack. Let's go back to the minutes. We have minutes to approve or consider approving from June 9th. Let's first talk about the minutes from June 9th. Do we have any substantive changes that we need to make to the June 9th meeting minutes? All right, any public comment on the June 9th meeting minutes? Not seeing any.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
See if we can lump in the other one, David, just to kind of streamline things. So now, June 23rd, any substantive changes from the council on the minutes for June 23rd? All right, hearing, seeing none, any public comment on the meeting minutes from June 20? Also seeing none. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from June 9th and June 23rd?
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes from June 9th and June 23rd. A second, Jack.
All right, first from Grover, second from West, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, happens unanimously, thank you very much. At this point, let's turn it over to staff report, Eli.
There we go. I muted myself, so I'm ready to go. So in the city manager's report, I mentioned about COVID-19, both the signage and the grant. So as far as signage, working with the county, the sheriff, the emergency operations center, supervisor Madrone and supervisor Rex Bond, we were able to get electronic message boards at the north, two miles north of the city, and on the exit ramp coming in from the south end of the city. This way, it says, keep six feet apart and wear face covering. Also, we submitted a grant for COVID-19 through the CARES Act. We'll be receiving $50,000. It needs to be used relating to COVID-19 expenses from now until December 30th. And had mentioned about the Sprint cell tower, that the equipment was removed from there, so they have decommissioned their portion, and I did get updates from the other two. So AT&amp;T said that they are now in construction on their new site, which is off of Quarry Road, and that's slated for being on air in October. That'll accompany the Verizon site, which is also off of Quarry Road, although they're on separate locations. In addition to that, the second site that they're working on is in West Haven, and Verizon is working on that, and they said that that they're expecting a building permit to be issued, and after that, construction department will schedule the work, typically will take three months. And then, as far as AT&amp;T, yeah, so that's AT&amp;T, will then join Verizon, and they'll utilize the same cell tower in West Haven. And in addition to that, our deputy sheriff, Joe Jaeger, reported that although there were quite a few fireworks leading up to the Fourth of July, the Fourth of July, there were no issues with fireworks, and the evening was mostly spent for him at the head. There was, it seemed to be a much quieter Fourth of July, at least within town, than in the past. And that's all I have for the staff report. Entertain any questions.
Do you have a question, Freddie?
I have a question, Davies.
Go ahead.
Yeah, concerning the STR committee meeting, I would, I'd like to ask for when the cost analysis is gonna come through for STR application renewals. That was approved at a joint meeting quite a while ago, and I believe that the applications might be done, so there a timeframe for that?
Well, the cost analysis is getting the time element from the staff, so I will check and see how they're coming along with that, and then we can report back.
Okay, and I have one more comment, same topic. It says here that fines are gonna be collected by the STR manager, and other fines could be collected by the city. Is this a recommendation that's going to come to the city council? Because the way this is written, it sort of sounds like a decision has been made, and it's a policy. I'm not aware that that was the function of the committee, to make a policy.
Yeah, what happens is the STR ordinance itself addresses the fines, so that is not changing. The only thing that we were talking about was, when something happens that's a violation, when will it be the responsibility of the STR, either property manager or owner, to collect the fine? And when is it the responsibility of the city to directly collect the fine? So either way, the fine will end up with the city, but what we were clarifying, and what I had indicated, is the way I see the interpretation in enforcing it, is that if the violation stems from the STR property, then the STR owner or property manager should collect that fine and turn it over to the city. If it happens on public property, like one of the trails, sidewalk, public street, where someone has a violation, they'd be like any other visitor, and at that point, it would be up to our law enforcement and the city to collect whatever that fine would be.
Okay. I'm done, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments about the city manager's report?
Okay. Any other questions or comments about the city manager's report? I just want to sort of take a second to recognize, uh, Eli and public work staff, uh, sign that is now on the northbound off ramp was initially, uh, placed right in the town, um, which was not the instructions that, that were given. And so, uh, the mix-up in communication and within hours, the location sign had been changed. And so thank you, Eli, for that quick response, um, for folks making a decision sort of outside of the normal realm. So I wanted to take a minute to, to recognize you for that. Thank you.
All right. At this time, uh, we have items from the floor. I'm just going to read this, uh, as I always do. At this time, members of the public may comment on items not appearing on the agenda. Individual comments will be limited to three minutes or less. Comments should be directed to the council as a whole and not to individual council members or staff. Council and staff responses will be minimal for non-agenda items. Um, so we'll do our best here to recognize the speakers, uh, either if you're on camera, raise your hand and unmute yourself, or, um, we have two callers not, that are not me, that are, uh, just using their phones. And so we can go that route too. So do we have any items from the floor at this time?
Me.
Go ahead.
Uh, I'm, I'm talking about the sign that is placed on the exit, uh, the freeway coming into Trinidad from the south. That sign is so dim, it is so poorly illuminated that it is almost impossible to read it. And, uh, if the city is paying rent on it to Mercer Fraser, who is the company that seems to be providing the sign, you guys are getting ripped off. It's my comment.
And I'm sorry, can you identify yourself? It sounds like I know.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, this is Elaine Weinreth from the Trinidad area.
Thank you.
Yeah. And this is Eli, just to comment on that. Uh, the sign was provided courtesy of, uh, supervisor Rex Bond and Mercer Fraser. And, uh, so I will check into the fact that it is dim, but the city's not being charged for the sign.
That's good.
Thank you, Ms. Weintraub. Uh, other comments from, or items from the floor?
Good evening. Hello? Yes, hello. Uh, this is Katrin Homan. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I'd like to thank all the community members who came out on June 10th to celebrate the eighth graders during the Trinidad school graduation. My daughter and her friends were graduating that day and, um, you all being there for them with your cheers and the beautiful signs made this graduation very special. And although the masks were hiding them, there were a lot of big smiles and happy faces. Please know that your support is very much appreciated. Thank you.
That was a fun day, Ms. Homan. That was a fun day. So thank you for those comments. Other, uh, items from the floor? Do we have someone weighing in or? All right. We will move on then. Thank you for those comments. At this point, we are moving to the consent agenda. All matters on the consent agenda are considered routine by the city council and acted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is requested by any council member, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. A single opportunity for public comment on the consent agenda is available to the public. At this point, um, are there any, uh, comments from the council regarding the consent agenda? Seeing none. Any public comment on the consent agenda? All right. Uh, thank you for that. Uh, we need a motion, please, for the consent.
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
Second. First from Grover, second from Miller. Um, Gabe, do you mind calling the role on this one just to make sure?
Yes. Uh, so council member Miller?
Yes.
Uh, uh, West?
Yes.
Davies?
Yes.
And Ludwig?
Yeah.
Fine. Oh.
And Grover. Grover.
Yeah.
Yes, he's in there too. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Gabe. I just want to make sure because all of us raising our hands is kind of, uh, sometimes a little bit uh, hard to, to track. So thank you very much. Uh, moving on then to um, discussion action item number one. Uh, resolution 2020 dash 14 acknowledging the public service of Councilman Miller. I need to scroll through. And Eli, um, if let's see. If you want to, at least pump your camera.
No, okay. I don't know if you could see that. Can you see it?
A little bit higher, Eli.
Is that better?
Yep. Very nice. So I just want to take a moment to, uh, recognize the long service, uh, civil service to the city of Trinidad from Councilman Miller. We have a, a resolution. I'd like to read it just to um, highlight the many years of service and many ways that, uh, Dwight has left the city better than he's found it. Um, whereas the Trinidad City Council is responsible for the physical management of the city. We are setting aside adequate time to reserve to address emergencies, uh, unexpected expenses and the replacement of. Wait a minute. I'm reading the wrong one. Oh my gosh. I'm sorry about that. Comments? My bad. From Dwight. I like that one better. No, I was going to say Dwight, you really get into the weeds with your service. That's really nice. Apologize for that.
One of the years.
All right, here we go. Resolution 2020 dash 14 acknowledging the public service of Dwight Miller. Uh, Dwight Miller served as a city council, Trinidad city council member for 10 years and mayor from June 16 through December 17. He embraced his role as a public official, encouraged the community to engage respectfully with one another, promoted civil dialogue in meetings that recognized city staff for their work and dedication. Uh, Councilman Miller kept the planet as his top priority. He served as the city's representative to the Redwood Coast Energy Authority and kept the city informed of regional efforts to green the environment. He supported the Community Choice Program, the HERO Solar Program, and will finally get to see a full solar array installed on the town hall in 2020. Councilman Miller championed initiatives that protected the natural and scenic resources of Trinidad. He voted without hesitation to support the Leffinholz Creek sediment reduction project, the pier reconstruction project, the Clean Beaches Initiative, upgrades to the Trinidad Water Treatment Plant and restructuring the water rates to reward conservation. He also led the charge in 2015 to adopt water conservation measures to protect the city's water supply during drought. Councilman Miller served early on as the city's finance commissioner and shared his math expertise during several budget workshops. He participated thoughtfully in the appointment of numerous council and planning commissioners, was hands-on in city's transition to the management form of government and was instrumental in the process of hiring three city managers. Councilman Miller was committed to bringing tribal governments together and protecting cultural resources. He recognized the significance of the Chirai Village Site, was committed to working hand-in-hand with tribal governments and honored the heritage of all Native Americans. Councilman Miller was committed to the well-being of the community. He supported long-term housing and worked tirelessly to improve Trinidad experience for both residents and visitors alike. He provided strong leadership and guidance during the Memorial Lighthouse relocation project, recognized all voices and opinions and helped the community find balance on many complicated issues. Councilman Miller walked the walk. He installed enough solar panels on his house to energize a small power plant. He ran errands by bicycle in all weather conditions and kept his promise to one day own a completely electric vehicle. He honored the past, embraced the future and inspired his friends and colleagues to keep thinking outside the box. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of, the city council of Trinidad congratulates and thanks Dwight Miller for his wholehearted and dedicated service to the citizens of Trinidad and to the future well-being of his community. So thank you very much, uh, Dwight, uh, for all of your service and for uh, quite an array of ways that again, you have left the city uh, much better than you found it and went through some pretty significant transitions in the last, uh, many years. So I do want to open it up, uh, for public and city council to, uh, do your best to embarrass Dwight and shower him with praise. Um, I wonder, wonder whether if, uh, if I could just inject, uh, three minutes at this time, would that be okay or should I do it later? No, this is, this is a good time. This is a good times. Um, uh, Gabe, are you in a position? I had a, a little PowerPoint I, I made up with a couple of comments. And, but by the way, I'd like to thank, uh, uh, the wordsmith for that document. I, I don't really recognize the guy. But, but, uh, uh, Gabe, are you in a position to put up a PowerPoint? And, and it's, it's good. Everybody's going to have to turn your head sideways, I think. There we go.
Yeah.
Okay. So these are just some thoughts and, uh, I'm sure we'll go on to the first one. And each one will get used to reading from the side. Uh, we need more input from the residents and city decisions. Our council decisions are often made without broad awareness by the residents. The current system of posting agendas three days before meeting meets legal requirements, but few residents really care until they realize our decisions affect them. And I want to recognize that many smart people in Trinidad, that we can design policies for their participation. We can make communication easier through our webpage. We can provide perks to include the citizens to provide ideas about major issues and we can invite proud source solutions before we take a vote. We could design our, our agendas and so to get people to get their ideas up before we take a vote. Okay. Another thought. Um, uh, in, in this regard toward these thoughts, we need a complete email list of all residents, which I've been trying to help with a little bit in the last couple of months. But it needs completion. And I will, I will be working on, I hope to work with, uh, Gabe and, and Eli about that. Uh, we need to, after we get that, so have some polls with, uh, folks in town making comments. And we need to maybe motivate people to reply because a lot of people say, well, I don't know. I don't feel like it. But there's some little things the council policies could make to, uh, incentivize comments from the residents. And we need to make the polling responses and comments viewable on our city webpage. And we need to encourage some volunteers to assist us because we have such a small staff to research solutions to our problems. Okay. There's another thought. Um, the thought basically is whose land are we the owners, so to speak, sitting on? And, um, many of our city efforts have centered on relations with local Native Americans, which basically begins to answer the question of whose land are we on? All counselors during my time have sincerely worked to resolve issues with Native Americans and to live with our neighbors with mutual respect. Yet it perhaps is time for all of us to dig deeply into the past 250 years of this space and to come to terms with crimes and racist behavior that existed before we were born, but really changed the face of Trinidad and caused maybe contribution to these deep emotions and lack of trust. Okay? What can we do? We can invite everyone, all of us to contribute narratives to encourage our views of what happened. The history. We need to plan meaningful recognition, recognition of past crimes against local Native Americans. We need to work to establish a common narrative of our recent history, just the last years that we've been alive. Because right now there's two, there's separate narratives going on. What has the city council done? Or how is this perceived by the local Native Americans? It's, I, when we've been in session, we've often heard different narratives. And we need to work toward have a common narrative of what has happened. And then we need to establish goals for future cooperation, including ways to recognize the history of the Chirai in the space. Maybe even renaming some of our places. Okay? And then there's something that's probably bigger than all of the things we're facing in today's meeting. Okay? Uh, it seems that the climate, changes to the climate are beyond our power, but unless each of us makes some changes, we are toast. We keep going, our daily behavior, our standard, uh, traditional things we do. But, uh, we don't feel the effects that science tells us will be more intense and more permanent even than COVID. If we continue our present behavior, our children and grandchildren will suffer beyond our imagination. And what can we do? We can put up solar panels with storage batteries in individuals in town. And I might just note that of the council, I am aware that 80% of the council have solar panels on their roofs. And Tom, you haven't announced yet, but that may be there too. Then install, we can install electric heat pumps instead of, um, propane heaters or fireplaces with, with logs. We can install heat pump water heaters uh, to minimize the use of propane. We could get electric cars or trucks, which are coming out this year to minimize gasoline. We could support city policies, and this is a challenge to the rest of you, that incentivize reductions in propane or gasoline by the city and by the residents. And finally, there's a biggie. We can vote green whenever possible. So, thank you. Thank you to all of you. And write me and let me know how, what your thoughts are. Thanks a lot, guys. Thank you, Dwight. Thank you for that summary. Um, I opened it up to the public for, and the council for, uh, for comments. And I can only see four names, four people on the screen here. So please, please weigh in.
Maybe I'll start off then. Um, Dwight, you and I have been working on this, on this council for a long time. Uh, and I certainly appreciate everything that you've done, but one of the things that I noticed in this PowerPoint and what he's done all the way through is recognize the details that I think make, um, the city better off. And I really appreciate that he's always seems to be thinking about something else that'll help the city. So, um, not only will, do I, am I, it's been very nice to work with you because I realize what we're getting into when you and I meet, that we're really going to uh, look at things carefully. But the other thing is we're going to miss you because I think those details were helpful to the city. So, um, great to work with. Sorry to see you go. Hope we'll stay in touch and you'll keep helping out the city whenever you can. Thank you for your service.
I want to add to that too. That was, uh, yeah, that was a really good way to close yourself out. I mean, I, I liked it. I learned actually a lot by this um, acknowledgement, even though I knew you, you had quite an extensive background here. It's nice to see it all, all kind of concisely written like that. I mean, you've done a lot. And, uh, yeah, I hope that, uh, I'm accepted into RCA the way you are because they were very, very, uh, disappointed to see you leave. Um, but good news is that you still will be around. I mean, and you're definitely going to be involved. You're just not going to be on the seat, but I know, I know you still do a lot. You're still very active in the community and I'm going to be asking your help as I move ahead with this, uh, micro grid research and things like that. So thanks again, Dwight.
And could I note, Gabe, you can pull the, uh, the, the screen share off so that folks could see the, um, the video, uh, screens of others if you want. Uh, Richard, I believe you had your hand up.
Yes. I just wanted to thank Dwight. He's wise beyond his years. Uh, and, and what he's been able to share and the background. And whenever I have a conversation with him, it's always someone willing to help and provide insight uh, to help other people understand issues and sometimes difficult issues. So Dwight, I, I thank you. And again, I appreciate all your service to the town, the city.
Thank you.
Yes. Congratulations on your newly found, uh, free time, Dwight. And I hope you enjoy it and, uh, thanks for all your service. 10 years is a long time. So you can be proud of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Dwight, um, there, there's, uh, you're really almost holy to, to give credit to, um, getting me to get involved. And it's been a, a great, a great journey. Um, I remember early on, sort of talking with you about involvement with the city and it has definitely been a, a very good decision. So thank you for supporting me along the way for
decision. So thank you for supporting me along the way, for giving me your, both your global perspective and your also detailed perspective. So really appreciate it. And also really happy that we get to continue to benefit from these, with this microgrid project that David referred to. So very, very happy for you.
Thank you.
And I wanted to thank Dwight for all of the assistance he gives to staff, you know, whether it's regarding solar, whether it's the emails, newsletter, any kind of way to reach out to the community. And then also, just, he was actually the first council member that I had met when I was applying. And we had the interview. And, and I appreciated that. That was like the pre-interview before the interview with all of the council members. And, and also your education background has been very helpful on the council, your perspective, your insight, your comments. They were all very beneficial for the city. So thank you.
Thank you.
Other thoughts from folks? I saw a comment from Cheryl in the chat, so if you're able All right. Well, thank you very much, Dwight. I believe you get to ride the meeting out. But our next agenda item may, might change your mind. So thanks again, Dwight. We're moving on to number two, discussion decision regarding appointment of new council member to fill vacancy left by the resignation of Dwight Miller. So let's see, I have to switch back to my agenda.
Mr. Mayor, this is Jackie from the Rancheria. I had a comment.
Oh, yes. Sorry, Jackie. Please.
That's okay. I just wanted to really thank Dwight on behalf of the Rancheria. We, we really did enjoy working with you, Dwight. And you have, you have always been kind and thoughtful. And I think very, very much concerned. I appreciated your slide regarding Native Americans recognizing what meaningful recognition, recognition of past crimes and, and also the current issues that we face with the city and the Rancheria and other, the other Native Americans in the community. So I just want to thank you for that thoughtfulness. And I truly believe that you're sincere and genuine in your desire to move things forward in a really good way. So thank you, Dwight. We appreciate you.
Thank, thank you, Jackie. And the many of you who've made these comments, it really touches me. I'm starting to cry at this moment.
Well, that was our cue then to change topics, right, Dwight? Didn't we work this out ahead of time? As soon as the crocodile tears happened, we were gonna move on? All right. Thank you again for, for all your comments, folks, and Dwight, for your service. We are gonna move on to our second agenda item, which is the discussion decision regarding appointment to fill the remaining term of council member Dwight Miller. We did receive a letter of interest from Richard Kompas, which was included in the packet along with his resume. Just some background, Miller's, Councilman Miller's term expires December 2022. And based on his longevity of service within this term, we as a council are able to appoint a replacement that, in such a way that whoever is successful in that appointment does not have to participate in the number election. The eligibility for folks just to know is must live inside the city limit and must be a registered voter inside the city limit. Again, Mr. Kompas has submitted a letter of interest. And at this point, Richard, do you want to say a few words to the council and the public?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I had discussions with Dwight about what it would be like to be a city council person. And it really was one of supporting the community and trying to make Trinidad a better place. It's a very humble spot to fill from Dwight. But I come from a perspective of health and welfare. I'm an ophthalmist and eye doctor who moved to Trinidad to be close to my grandchildren. It's a thrill to be here. But I look at this as an opportunity to kind of pay back to the community for being comfortable and maybe able to help others. I've made it a position to get a license in California so I can provide free eye care, which I've done already. And I hope to continue to do that again in the future, as there are more opportunities to do so. But I appreciate the opportunity, but it's just, it's an amazing place. And I would just like to contribute as Dwight has, perhaps followed as footsteps to, to help the welfare and, and support the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the council for, for Mr. Kompas? Yes, Mr. David?
I don't really have too many questions, other than I'm looking over your, your, the paperwork that you submitted. And you've got a very impressive background. Looks like you've worked with a lot of different people in different capacities. So it looks like you are collaborative based on this and abroad, within a broad range of areas. And I appreciate that. And I just wonder if there's any particular place that you feel you could, other than eye care, what do you think you could help the city council with?
The, the areas that I'm interested in, two areas is, one is communication. This COVID problem, we hope will be gone within a couple of years. And then I look at the ability of Trinidad to, to prosper. A lot of it is related to tourism. It would be great to have more people visit, even for only a day, to visit the restaurants and the beaches. So one of the areas I'd like to help out is really updating the website and begin to try to come up with a plan to promote tourism in a very controlled manner in Trinidad. Since it's something that is part of the town, so other people can come and visit. And the second aspect of my career has been communication. I, I really would like the opportunity of, of trying to work with Native Americans in, in the area, with the Rancheria. I'd like to improve relationships. There's a lot of areas which are collaborative. And one of the areas is, is creating grants that may be from state or federal opportunities that could benefit both parties. So my area is really communication, relationships beyond healthcare. And if I could help the city in some way, better that relationship and also communicate externally, it would make to me Trinidad a bit more prosperous, and then hopefully provide more income for services that we can provide to our residents. Everyone's concerned about social welfare. I would love to be able to provide or help the city provide services when needed to those that, that need that help.
Thank you. I don't have any. Okay. Other questions or comments from the council and/or public?
Yeah, I, I like your background, too. I think it's very diverse. And I like the fact that you're into communications, because the transition we're going through, like we all know, with the climate and with pandemics and things like that. I mean, communication is gonna be key. And you definitely have a very broad education, very complete. So I look forward to working with you, unless, unless there's gonna be some major objection here that I don't know. Thanks.
Go ahead, Jack.
I just wanna tell you how much I appreciate what you have already, the things you have added to our council meetings already. I think I like the thoughtfulness and care you seem to give to subjects. So I think you're gonna be a great addition to this council. So I'm gonna be ahead of myself here to say welcome aboard, if that will happen.
Well, thank you for that. And what I would ask the council to do, I'm gonna do one last call for public comment, but get ready, council. What I propose is that we, in the chat, that we send a private chat to the city clerk with our vote appointment of Mr. Kompas. So those of you not familiar with the chat, you've got a minute or two to get used to that. So, but I would like to open it up one more time for public comment, any questions that the public might have or comments that the public might have. All right, seeing none. Then at this point, really what we're doing is calling for a vote on whether to, really the vote is, do we approve Richard to the city council? And so if you can type in your response to the chat to the city clerk, Gabe will keep track of that and then let us know once all the votes are in.
Mr. Mayor, I, according to the conditions for my resignation, it was until there is an appointment. But this is fellow speaking, but I will not be voting on this particular issue. I abstain from this issue.
And Gabe, just let's not leave out the four votes.
Yep, I see four yeses. Grover, Davies, Weston, Ladwig. So in one abstention, so I see an approval, four to oh.
Is there, Gabe, do you know, I only see myself and a comment from Cheryl Kelly earlier in the chat.
Because you gotta hit his privately. To do it privately, you would hit Gabe's little window.
Oh, I didn't know we were doing it privately.
Yeah, it doesn't matter. He spread it out anyway, so.
We have a, we have a unanimous approval. So, Richard, welcome to the city council. I believe that we gave you an oath to read.
We did.
And Gabe, please correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I believe this is the time that we do it?
Yes, sir. Normally, we would do the repaid after me process if we were doing this in person, but it might be a little easier if Mr. Kompas just read the oath out loud. And that will be his formal introduction, once that's done.
Go ahead, Richard.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. Let me stand back here, so you can see me. I, Richard Kompas, do solemn swear, and I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic. And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the State of California. And I will take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation, purpose, or evasion. And I will faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. That's it.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Yeah, congratulations.
Congratulations. Welcome to the team.
Thank you. I've got more questions than answers, but I will figure that out.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll see you guys later. Bye-bye.
See you, Dwight. Gabe, any more at this point? Dave, any more, any more business we need on this agenda item?
Sorry, I did not hear you. No, we are looking good. The vote is done. The oath is bred. Mr. Kompas has the other formal documents that we'll need to take care of, but at this point, he's ready to serve.
All right. Well, here we go. So we're moving on to item number three. Let me switch back over to my agenda. And item number three is, let's see, discussion decision regarding draft water shortage planning process. So I believe Trevor is on the call. And so I first want to take a moment to recognize the incredible work that the planning commission has done on this water shortage contingency plan. Very thoughtful, very detailed, and look forward to this discussion. But Trevor, can you give us a brief preamble?
Yeah, absolutely. So as you know, the city council asked the planning commission to work on a drought contingency plan, or a water shortage contingency plan. But it's sort of difficult to talk about, you know, just drought planning in a vacuum. And so we started a little bit broad. The council didn't give us a lot of guidance on, on exactly how to frame that discussion. One of the first things I did was meet with some of GHD staff and talk to them about some, you know, solutions and issues. And a lot of what we've talked about in the last couple of meetings really goes beyond what the council has asked the planning commission to do. But the planning commission really wanted the council to get this information, have the benefit of this information, so that you could move forward with prioritizing any of these, you know, suggested actions and possibilities. You know, one of the things I think that was, was really interesting in talking with GHD staff, you know, reviewing most drought contingency plans or water shortage plans, you know, they have a reservoir, or, you know, whether it's an aquifer or, or a lake. And so when they know there hasn't been a lot of water, they can conserve early in the season. That helps preserve water for later in the year. And Trinidad really doesn't have that benefit, because you're sort of at the mercy of whatever's flowing down the creek. So it can go from, you know, being able to pump at full capacity to reduce capacity rather quickly. And that was something that, that GHD really wanted the city to be aware of. So some of these actions, I've sort of put into long, medium, short-term actions that the city council can, can consider. The other thing that I did is, we got a draft report improvements mostly that can, you know, reduce water loss and increase storage and increase supply. For example, the possibility of developing a new summer intake system that would be a little bit more drought resistant. Connecting to Humboldt Bay or developing rainwater catchment would also fall into that section. Forecasting and monitoring is, is more information gathering. You know, we don't have a lot of information on flow on Luffenhold Creek right now, and able to, in order to correlate it with drought conditions. But the city is now collecting that. We do have a lot of rainfall data. But we still can use some of the other sources that are out there in terms of monitoring drought conditions and know where we're at. And then, you know, I think it would be beneficial also to get a better handle on water rights in Luffenhold Creek and develop a relationship with, with the water board on how they're issuing additional water rights on Luffenhold Creek. Replacing water meters with, with radio red systems would help, you know, if the city does get into a position where they have to require reductions in water use, that would be a really good way to monitor it, because you sort of need real time. And then there, section three is the drought and water shortage response. So that's where the drought contingency plan falls. And so this is the section that the planning commission will be working on, focusing on from here on out. So sort of setting these stages for water shortage, and then what are the responses in terms of, you know, education, required cutbacks? How do we require people to cut back? There's different ways to do that. And then also enforcement and penalties. So that'll be what the, the planning commission will be focusing on in the next couple of months. And then recovering, recovery and relief is the section that really hasn't been developed much. But, you know, what do you do in the aftermath to sort of get, get things back on track? So, you know, this is really an introduction to this topic. And I know it's a lot of information. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about any of these items that are outlined in this document.
Thank you for that preamble, Trevor, and also for this, this draft report is, is again, a very detailed. very detailed report from which to work, so thank you for that. Questions or comments from the council at this point regarding the presentation regarding the draft policy?
I got one.
Go ahead, David.
On that table too, so you're working with GHD to figure out to be, right now, do you have a timeline for when that will be determined, because I know you've been going at it for a while now.
I'm sorry, you cut out a little bit there, so you were asking about the drought stage table?
Yeah.
And the timeline?
Of when we will be able to determine those amounts.
Yeah, that's a good question, I think we have the stages, you know, in terms of where those fall, I think those are pretty well flushed out. At the next meeting tomorrow, actually, we'll be talking more about, you know, how to require cutbacks, so, you know, we've looked at some different options in terms of, you know, cross-the-board cutbacks, but we don't want to punish people who are already conserving water, so we're looking at some different options, but it's gonna take time to develop this, and, you know, eventually we'll need an ordinance to implement it and to make it enforceable, so, you know, it's not gonna be something that happens right away.
Okay. Trevor, can you expand a little bit on this notion that you mentioned about the smart metering and how that would be used? As I understand it, as a sort of during possible drought times, it's a quicker way to get a sense of usage, but as I understand it, those meters are one such that you have to, basically Public Works has to drive by the meter to get a reading on it, is that what we're talking about, where the meters, just you could do the whole street in minutes instead of hours?
That's correct, so instead of actually having to go out and physically read meters, which would take time, and then you have to compile the data, this would be electronic signals, it would automatically go, you know, into some database or spreadsheet, and so you can really monitor people's water use real time, and see who's cutting back and following the restrictions and who's not, so that would be, that kind of thing would be really helpful for monitoring and enforcement at some point.
And I imagine an ancillary benefit to it is that it would also identify leaks almost immediately, if the ability to collect the usage is that real time, then leaks could be detected almost the same time as they're happening, right?
That's correct, so, you know, right now, you don't know, you have a leak, you could have a leak for 30 days before the meter's read, and you get the bill and you find out, so this would provide more real-time data for the city to be able to identify leaks, yeah.
Okay, I mean, I'm not proposing that we read meters every day, but during peak times, we can read it more often, is what I'm hearing.
Yes.
Okay, and then on capacity building, I know there's been quite a bit of input from Supervisor Madron, from his experience in water, is this where those different ideas would be folded in, where the council would be considering devoting resources to increasing capacity, possibly using some of the techniques and methods that he has discussed over the time, over the years?
Yeah, absolutely, so that would fall under the increased water supply item, which starts towards the bottom of page three of that plan, and, you know, there's the Humboldt Bay system, but there's also his idea of putting rainwater catchment ponds in the upper watershed that would then feed the creek during the summer. That would also, you know, that would also require some creek monitoring, and I think also looking at, you know, water rights and diversions in the rest of the watershed would be important with that, but those are things where, you know, those are very long-term, and they're not gonna happen even in, you know, 10 years would be very hopeful for either of those options, and so, and it, you know, another thing that he pointed out that I think was a good thing to think about is, right now, there are grants available, because those grants lag behind, you know, they were budgeted for a while ago, and, or voted on bonds or whatever a while ago, but some of those grant sources might dry up as, you know, with the state's budget issues coming up in the future, so it might be worthwhile to look for grants for some feasibility studies sooner rather than later. You know, developing a new summer intake system is something that could be done more quickly, and that could increase the plant's capacity during low flows.
Okay, and then I just wanted to echo David's comment about the usefulness of table one, the different demand reduction actions, and the percent shortages and whatnot, so look forward to getting the planning commission's input on kind of filling in some of those mandatory water restrictions and what both might need, so. Other questions from the council at this point, and then I want to open it up to the public, Mr. Davies?
Yeah, thanks, so a lot of information, so I feel like it's a pretty good start. I'm happy to hear that you're going to be focusing on the actual process of what to do during a drought, I think that it's the more, I thought that's what we had directed, so that I'm happy to hear that that's a higher priority right now, rather than storage and water meters and all of these other things. If you, in the future, I think, it would be helpful for me if you referenced reports that you've seen that help provide thought insight, and if you could include reports, you referenced a water department, Department of Water Resources report, I think I found it online, it looks like it was written in March of 2020, and I also found a really good outline, you may have seen it already, Appendix Five, in that document, that goes through an outline of exactly what you guys are saying you're gonna do with direct action, you know, we're having a drought, this is, we're having a water shortage right now, this is what we need to do. I think that's very important, because it's mentioned a couple of times on the first page of your staff report, that we can go from being really good to being not so good very quickly with our situation with lack of storage, et cetera, so having a nimble plan to enact in a fairly quick manner, I think is a really good idea. One other thing I want to, on the second paragraph of your report, it says, on the first page, the planning commission wants to focus on the tasks given to them by the council, also wants the council to be aware of some of these other issues, and then it says, and potential actions that have come up, so I'm kind of, I wonder what potential actions that have come up are, are those included in here, or it sounds like something happened.
Oh, no, I think that's just meaning that these, like this bulleted list that's at the end of the report, it's just referring to those, so, you know, everything from, you know, looking for grants, starting a feasibility study, one of the things we've talked about recently is developing some pre-approved plans for small household rainwater catchment, so 5,000, like 5,000 gallon tanks, and sort of get some pre-approved engineered drawings for that, so there are things that the city can start, you know, implementing right away, and things that'll take longer to plan and budget for, but those are the actions.
Okay, so you've already discussed those things, so I just was, it just kind of jumped up at me when I hear potential actions that come up, like, all of a sudden, we don't have half of the pipes working or something, so we need to get this done Friday or something like that, that's all I have for right now.
And I can email you guys a link to that Department of Water Resources report, you are correct, that was an oversight, I should have included at least a link in this packet to that, thank you.
Thank you.
And if we can, just imagine a lot of folks would like that, and if we can include that in the packet for the meeting, and that way it's available easily for anyone researching this meeting. Other questions, did I see your hand go up, Jack?
I'd like to hear public comment first, please.
Okay, Richard, any questions or comments regarding, okay, okay, opening up to public comment at this point, questions for Trevor and/or the council, or staff. Go ahead, Mr. Kenny. Don't forget to unmute yourself, sir.
Or muted?
You are un, now you're muted again. Go ahead. No, you muted yourself again. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, because my computer says mute now, so I guess it's the opposite of what it says. All right, I was just gonna say, I've been attending the planning commission meetings where this is being worked up, and, yeah, I think, you know, it's kind of a big job, they're taking it piece by piece, and I like the idea of the smart meters. I'm, I guess what I would, I'm assuming a lot of this will be paid out of the water fund, since it relates to the water system, and that's pretty flush with cash right now, I think, from what, no, that's a good thing, but smart meters, I think, are kind of expensive, probably a good investment. That's about all I have for you right now, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments, questions from the public? A very quiet group tonight, all right, Jack, you wanted to make some way in after public comment, so.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions for Trevor about this, by the way, I think this, like Professor, I'm really impressed with the document, I think you did a really nice job, it was, it really looks like it covers a lot, so, I just had a couple of things that I was, would suggest, one of them is, what are the drought and water storms response for the stages? When we, when we had some conservation issues or measures put in place a few years ago, Becky had a list of things that we were trying to do, and you've got a lot of them in here, but I would think, even in the stage one, it might be nice to begin some of these simple conservation measures, you have down, we can, it is voluntary, but it would be nice, I think it would be nice to jump these up earlier, because as you say, when the creek begins to go, it's gonna, may go pretty fast, I think, especially in stage one to stage two, I think it'd be nice to see things cut back right away, at least to a certain extent, so people are recognizing that, that there are issues out there, we need to start working on them right away. I mean, everything else looks, stage three or stage four, I think we're really at stage five, I think, I just thought, why not start right away in stage one to getting people to recognize that when they have issues, and they can start doing some conservation issues, like every, the watering two days a week. Did you talk to Becky about some of those ways we did it before?
Well, we've, we do need to, the city does need to adopt water efficient landscaping ordinance, so that's one of the things we'll be looking at, we've talked about having a waste prohibition ordinance in general, so that at all times, you can't just wash your car, water, so that water goes running down the street, certain things that sort of just prevent waste all the time, might be worthwhile for the city to have, but yes, and I've talked to Becky about some of the grant opportunities and rainwater catchment and things like that.
Well, since we had a, we were working on that years ago, but some of that was already in place, I thought it worked, I thought it worked pretty well, and it really isn't hard on the community to do these simple things, which would get people to recognize early in the process that they have some things they better think about, anyway, maybe those, just to talk to her, we had a whole set of them that we ran through. Of course, number, number five, stage five, I just, just to mention this, some kind of a supplement, it seems like that's gonna be a big issue to try to figure out how we can, nobody has water, so I think that's gonna be a tough one. Last thing is just, I was concerned about, this may be an Eliot answer, but the report, how the, you as a city, how's the city manager gonna get information, are we gonna, I didn't see anything about how that information goes from the water plant, we have that, to the city manager, I know they have a process for that, but I didn't know if that needed to be written up, so if you have a new person working with the water, that they would know how fast they need to report things and get information to the city manager, so they have kind of a set of things that they need to do to make sure, as soon as they see an issue, that starts getting into them right away, I didn't know where that would fit, but I just thought it might be something to think about.
That's a good point, I think, actually, for the drought contingency plan draft that I'm giving to the planning commission tomorrow, that I've given to them, actually, I think there's a little preamble that talks about responsibilities and how that information gets relayed, so it would be the city council probably who declares these stages, but yeah, we should figure out that information train, that's a good point. The, in terms of the emergency supply, there is, we have received some positive feedback for potentially being able to purchase water from either McKinleyville Service District or the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District, because, you know, Ruth Lake wouldn't be as susceptible to drought, so they might still have water when the city's running out, but the logistics of getting that water and trucking it in, you know, it's something we should probably plan ahead for, and we'll be, the planning commission will be talking about that a little bit more in terms of its contingency plan.
Thank you.
Steve, I have a question.
Yes.
Trevor, it's Richard Kompas, the current storage tanks that the water system have are redwood, and I don't know what the lifespan of those storage tanks might be, but I did understand that if there were a serious fire, both tanks would be emptied in a matter of about two hours, and the report that you have indicates that it doesn't necessarily recommend additional storage tanks, but is there any assessment made to the E of the current condition, the two tanks we rely on, or is there a benefit beyond drought contingency plan to have a third tank, again, just to make sure you have adequate water to supply the area in case there'd be an emergency?
Absolutely, and some of the GHD reports did get into that in terms of, you know, fire flows and how adequate that is, yeah, and it's pretty minimal in terms of what the storage the city has, the city has applied for grants for additional storage, apparently those fell through, I don't know if there are any current efforts in that direction, the issue of the fact that they're wooden and susceptible to fires has also been brought up, so yeah, I think that's definitely an issue, it's not necessarily a drought contingency issue, because it's not gonna provide long-term, you know, over an extended shortage, that storage isn't gonna be enough, we have to figure out from the supply and use standpoint, but yeah, I think, you know, increasing storage, and then also this idea of more individual storage, so, you know, trying to encourage people to put in some household rainwater catchment systems, again, it's not gonna provide water over prolonged drought, but every little bit helps.
Thank you.
Trevor, I got a question, you had mentioned about you don't want to penalize someone who's already conserving water, do we have a sort of a baseline usage for, you know, per bedroom, per square footage, some way to assess if a property is a big user or a small user? I remember growing up in Southern California, we talked about, you know, the putting in showerheads that reduced water while agriculture was using a percentage that was just so far outside of the comparison, it wasn't really apples to apples, do we have a sense of what a normal water usage is for residents? of what a normal water usage is for, for residential, for business, that kind of thing that we can kind of get our heads wrapped around?
That's a good question. Um, you know, uh, Humboldt County Division of Environmental Health, they have, um, some estimates for water use for sizing septic systems. I have found, though, that those way overestimate actual use, and so, you know, my suggestion is to actually do a, a, a little analysis of water use in Trinidad and try and sort of, exactly, sort of figure out based on you know, number of bedrooms and/or lot size, sort of this baseline use that, um, and that could also be something that would be used for water rates. So, you know, your rate is one thing if you're using under the baseline. If you start to go above that baseline, then you start paying higher rates. Um, that would also help encourage conservation. So, yeah, I think that's the direction we're gonna go to, and to me, it would make sense to base that on Trinidad's actual water use. Um, I was looking at, um, the City of Santa Cruz's water shortage contingency plan and ordinance, and they have an allocation system like that. Um, I haven't spent a lot of time looking at it, but I'm, I'm gonna look at that a little bit more in depth as well.
I would really encourage that to be sort of a, almost a, a cornerstone of this water use policy or drought contingency, rather, is knowing what's, what's, uh, sort of normal and to be able to react quickly to something that's, again, either a catastrophic leak or a sudden increase in usage based on behavior of the, either the resident or the business, you know, any of our customers, uh, that are, that are using water. So I think that would be, um, something very useful. I seem to remember a conversation that we couldn't have a tiered rate system. Um, i- is that, did we ever come to a conclusion on the, sort of the legality of having a tiered water rate system, uh, in Trinidad?
Yeah, that's more of a question for, for GHD. Um, you know, there have been some court cases and there's, um, I think it's Prop 218, there's, there's a couple of state laws that, that regulate how you can charge fees for public services and you, you, they can't be a moneymaker for the city, basically, and the, the fee for the service has to be, um, you know, commensurate with the, with the cost of providing the service. And so, um, one of the suggested actions in here is doing a, preparing a new rate study. Um, cuz it looks like maybe rates are not keeping up with the costs of, of providing the water service at this point, and so. And as part of that, you could look at, you know, well, if someone's using a higher volume, um, it puts more pressure on the pipes, whatever it is that maybe costs more to the city, and so you can justify, you just have to justify that added cost. So it, it is a little bit more difficult than just a flat rate structure.
Okay. Other questions for Trevor? And I believe at this point, uh, we're really just providing input. Um, how does this fit, though, with, um, it sounds like we're moving towards a need for these two ordinances that you were talking about, the efficiency ordinance and the waste prevention ordinance. Are there other sort of business sorts of things that we need to be working on, um, once the planning commission has had another, uh, another stab at this?
Well, I think, again, um, you know, the planning commission's gonna focus on just that drought contingency planning, which is the stages and, and responses and so required conservation. That will end up having an ordinance, but I think, um, some of these other, you know, infrastructure improvements, looking for grants, um, you know, funding some studies, uh, things like that, um, are really in the council's hands at this point to decide how to move forward.
Okay, okay. I think, uh, any last comments from council or public at this point? Do you feel, Trevor, that we've, uh, given you enough input on the, sort of the different elements that you've presented?
Yeah, I, I think so, and, you know, I just, um, like I said, the this is more for informational and the planning commission wanted you guys to be aware of this information and for, for you to think about it and, you know, might be worthwhile to have this on a future agenda and have GHD staff um, there to talk more about some of, some of the details of these things.
And I see Cheryl is on the call as well. Ms. Kelly, do you have any, um, questions for the group as, as you go into prepping for, uh, tomorrow's meeting?
Thank you. No, I appreciate the feedback. Um, it's pretty much what we expected, and, uh, we're gonna just continue to refine the drought contingency plan and then bring it back to the council.
Awesome. Yeah, thanks again for the, for the hard work. Uh, so thanks for the. Did, I'm sorry, did someone raise their hand? Okay, maybe it's someone outside. So we'll move on to, uh, item number four, uh, discussion decision regarding draft land use element of the general plan. And for those following in the packet, uh, let's see. What page are we on? Eighty-four in the packet of one twenty-seven. So, uh, I'm gonna turn it back to Trevor, unless you need to get a dr- a gl- glass of water from all the talking before.
I've got it right here.
There we go.
So, again, this is, um, sort of just an introductory item, and the planning commission has also continued to work on the general plan update. Um, in between some of the other things we've been working on, so we gave you the i- uh, introduction chapter last fall or early winter. Um, it might be good to review that cuz it sort of sets the stage for, for the rest of the general plan. And then the land use element is really one of the key elements of, of the general plan. And all the rest of the general plan will need to be consistent with, with this, um, so it sort of sets the stage in terms of, um, you know, the different land uses. Uh, we've looked at land use in the city limits. We've also, you know, looked at land use outside the city. There's a planning area, sphere of influence, some of these other things, a water service area. Um, and at this point, the, the coastal commission has provided some, some comments on this, and we've responded to those comments. And, um, you know, gotten as much public input at the planning commission level as we can, and so, um, they were ready to, to pass this along to, to the city council, so it's ready for your review, discussion, questions. Um, just keep in mind, we're, we're going through element by element right now, but at some point, the whole document is gonna come back to you a- at once for a final review and approval, cuz we have to make sure it's all internally consistent and, and put together, um, like it should be.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, questions or comments for Trevor at this point from the council?
Um, you know, I'll start this off. Yeah, I was, I had the opportunity to at, uh, the class for local government, uh, when I first moved to Trinidad, so I went over the general plan. And we were tasked with kind of doing this ourself. Um, I would've got an A rather than like a B minus, cuz this is really good and complete, and I like the, uh, I like the historical background. I think it, I think it emphasizes the, the reasoning behind the ordinances when people understand why we, why we put them in place. Um, and since, you know, the only thing, I don't, I, I can't see any thing. I'm sure it's, it's just about done the way it is, it looks to me, but, um, yeah, good. No real question.
Other questions from the council or comment?
I have some. Yes, um, thanks for providing this. I have some things written down here. Um, I have a comment on page two. Last paragraph of the second introduction background. I'm just wondering if commercial crab fishing should be included in the Trinidad is now a quaint state site, since they really thrive on tourism recreation, including sport fishing. Still one of our big deals in the wintertime would be commercial crab fishing.
Sure.
That industry perhaps. Um, and then I had just a few other questions. You, you said that the coastal commission has given some comments. I, for one, would find it helpful to see what those comments are, so I can compare what we have here and what the coastal commission is also commenting on.
Sure.
Um, like to see where they're going and where we're going and how we may differ in our views. Um, so one of the specific things I would like to know about is that's on page thirteen of the general plan. I, I'm not looking at a digital copy, so I don't know what page it is in the, in the, um, packet. But it talks about commercial land and it talks about that the Trinidad Bay Trailer Court has been um, categorized differently than visitor services, or it has now been designated as uh, community development. It's a, has, it has mobile home spaces, but there's only, to my knowledge, like one manufactured home down there, the rest are RVs. And I don't, I have kind of puzzling as to how we can use this as visitor services and affordable housing at the same time. Is that what's happening in this document?
No, but that's a, it's a very interesting issue, and I'm still a little confused about it. That was not something the coastal commission had comments on. The, um, the version they reviewed is a little bit earlier than this, and I'm, I'm not sure how much of this discussion changed. That's something that I've only more recently discovered in, in the last couple of years that, um, that the, our, so there, the two RV parks are designated by the city as visitor-serving uses. Um, the the, they're regulated a little bit different than normal land uses, though, because building permits and, and other kinds of approvals are actually through the department, State Department of Housing and Community Development. And so they regulate and they, they permit and they monitor, um, RV parks, mobile home parks. And they actually, they actually now have, um, the, the Trinidad Bay Trailer Courts designated as all mobile home spaces, and that doesn't mean they have to be mobile homes, but it means that they have basically they're permanently, they have water and sewer connections. Um, and they don't have to have mobile homes on them, but, um, that's how the owner has, has designated them, and the HCD has accepted that, and they're, um, compliant with that permitting. And then more recently, Hidden Creek, um, is under new ownership, new management. Um, you know, they, they've really cleaned, kind of cleaned up that place up, and part of the way they've done that is by having long-term residents there instead of the more short-term residents, and so, you know, I don't necessarily wanna rock that boat, but it's not necessarily consistent with the city zoning and and the city doesn't even really get credit for those as new housing units either, um, under the circumstances, so. You know, that is gonna have to be a discussion with the coastal commission and, um, you know, we are gonna be starting to implement our housing element, and so how do we reconcile um, that? And I think that, uh, you know, at some point, the city's gonna have to do an inventory, some sort of study on visitor services, overnight accommodations in the planning area, not just the city, cuz city doesn't have to provide at all, but looking at, you know, the planning area, um, and whether the existing overnight accommodations are adequate and whether the city needs to redesignate, you know, there's a couple of large planned development parcels, for example, that are vacant. Maybe those should be designated visitor services. Um, I'm, I'm not sure exactly how that's, that's gonna play out. I have mentioned this issue to both the coastal commission and the HCD, and I haven't gotten, you know, any clear direction from, from either agency.
Yeah, like just as you mentioned, that's a, to me, that's a, um, a really big point because if we're not getting credit for visitor service areas, when the coastal commission is always asking, so cuz they have asked in the past, you know, invent, please inventory how many rooms are available, what the cost of those rooms are, et cetera, et cetera. And I think we're going backwards in this town if we have now declared somehow that these visitor services areas are long-term housing. So I'm very concerned about that, and so any information you get, I would be really grateful if you could forward that to the council.
I will definitely continue to look into that issue and keep you guys posted.
Um, yeah, so do you know, so you said it's the owner that could get this re-designated? I'm just kind of puzzling as to you're saying you're not quite sure how it happened and who design, who, who, who jumps into this pile and says, this is what it is?
Yeah, it's, um, I talked to, there is a, a local representative for HCD who inspects and monitors the, the RV and, and mobile home parks around here, and so I did talk to him a little bit. Um, and basically, that is something that, you know, the owner reports, well, how many RV spaces and how many mobile home spaces they have. And HCD just comes and verifies that those spaces are compliant with whichever requirements those, those have. Um, and so, it's not an approval process for them, but I think technically in the coastal zone, a change of use like that should have a coastal development permit.
Exactly.
And I don't know when that happened with Trinidad Trailer Courts. I do know Hidden Creek was, is more recent. Um, and, you know, I think that's, you know, maybe a conversation the city should start with the owners and, and the managers about how to, to balance that, because again, that has been a problem location. It's less of a problem right now. Um, you know, and so how, how do we wanna approach that?
Is it beneficial for the owners to have these things re-designated such as this? Since they're the ones self-reporting?
Um, I don't, I don't know what the, the pros and cons for them were.
Okay. Um, has a, I think you may have answered my question, um, a little bit earlier, but has this council, has the coastal commission commented on this since July of twenty nineteen? Those are the last, that's the last round of comments that I've seen?
No, we have not gotten any more comments since, I think it was July for the land use and introduction, then we got some more comments in September on the conservation open space element.
Okay. And when you get those, can you please forward those to the council as well, so we can all look at the same thing?
Absolutely. Um, their person who's responsible for reviewing these is out on maternity leave at the moment, unfortunately, um, but there, I, they had like three people reviewing and commenting, so, um, and I've mentioned that we wanna continue to have a dialogue with, with them. Um, because we, we don't wanna get into a situation where we've gone so far down the road on something that they're not gonna approve.
Yeah, that's my next comment is, I'm wondering if it would be more efficient. Or, you know, I know that you can't direct them to do this on a, in a certain timeframe, but it seems like we go from PC to the city council, back to the planning commission, back to this coastal commission, back to the planning commission, back to the city council. If there's some way to integrate all of this communication so it's a little more streamlined. Cuz, you know, this is, this process has taken so long. I mean, they commented a year ago, and they're saying we still don't have any extra comments from them. And, and they, and they have directed that things need to be completed because of grant deliverables, and I'm kind of concerned about where we are with all of those.
Yes, I think, um, yeah, and I have talked to them about that, um, you know, the, the, for example, the, the Ryanman rezone amendment was just approved last Friday by the coastal commission. The city approved that more than a year and a half ago, and that was one parcel. Um, so I did express some concerns about how we're ever gonna get this through the coastal commission, you know, and then we also have to update the zoning ordinance, and, and I asked them to please be mindful of, of limitations and, and, you know, to how we can move forward, um, in an efficient manner. So I, I have asked them to think about that.
Would it be helpful if, uh, somebody else from the city, such as the city manager, was also sticking and, you know, poking? And so just get this, so that you're not the one that's always needing to contact them? And so just get this, so that you're not the one that's always needing to contact them to, to keep this process forward?
Yeah.
Um, thank you. Another thing, they mentioned in their comments a while back that we should have reviewed our STR ordinance, um, as, after two years, and that was last June. It was two years and we still haven't done that. Um, and I don't know if that's something that would be, uh, pulled up and them approving parts of this, um, general plan? If we're not reviewing ordinances in a timely fashion, is that something that can happen?
Yeah, they have mentioned it. Um, you know, it's not a huge concern for them at, at this point. Um, you know, I think, you know, understanding that the city set up an STR committee and, you know, we're waiting for some potential recommendations from, from the STR committee. Um, otherwise we don't have any specific amendments to work on for that. But one thing to keep in mind is that the Coastal Commission will not officially review this general plan until they also have the implementing ordinances, so. And, and that's, that worries me, um, a little bit, because we're going to get through the general plan, then we're going to have to update the zoning ordinance and that's going to take time. And then by the time we're done with that, then this general plan is going to be old. I'm, I am worried about this vicious cycle, um, but we will have updated the ordinance by the time they get the whole packet.
Okay. Um, so another thing that I've, I kind of looked for and the Coastal Commission has also commented on is that supporting documents be available. Um, maybe online, I, I'm not sure all of them are online. I kind of poked around on our website today and I'm, had a hard time finding if supporting documents were there, such as, you know, total supply. I mean, I guess the water total supply, I built that, we've done that, we've been discussing that, so. Um, I don't know if that's one of the documents they're asking for as well. Is that?
I will, I will go through, um, you know, and some of our background reports do need some, some updating that, some of their comments. Um, most of them, I believe, are available on the website, but yeah, I will check that. And some of the older ones maybe are not. Um, I will, I will go through and, and check that and work with other staff to make sure those are available.
Okay. And, um, so just a couple more further things, that, and for the rest of the council to consider as well. If we could try to schedule presenting these elements, I know we talked about this in the past, um, having a schedule, and we, we did have one for a little bit and things were coming. Um, please, after tonight's meeting, let us know if you have clear guidance on what you need, because, um, I've seen it stated that the Planning Commission, um, had in many places, uh, an August memo that you sent to the Planning Commission, that there was no clear guidance. So please, tonight, don't hesitate to say you still do not have guidance and we need guidance in these areas. Um, and then if you could elaborate a little bit more on what's been done for public outreach on this plan. And then one last thing I'd like to say is, um, that I think it's important that the city, since we've just been discussing water contingency, vast contingent of things, water stuff. Mill Creek is mentioned in there, and I think it's important that we notify the county that we're when potential water drying projects are happening in that water, like, watershed.
Yeah, I have, I, um, I want to reach out to the county, um, not just for, for future referrals for cannabis projects, but, um, all projects within not just Levinhold's, but the city's planning area. I think it might be beneficial to develop an actual MOU with them and figure out, you know, s- somehow where they can flag projects to make sure that, that they keep the city, um, in the loop on any projects, particularly ones that could in, impact, um, water. So yeah, I think Eli and I can work on that, um, immediately.
It seems like they did that fairly recently with the project, um, that came to our attention. So that would be great if that could happen.
And I, I know we did that. Oh, go ahead. Okay, so we, I know we had a, a formal agreement, um, but it was about, it was about two years ago. And since then, uh, supervisors have changed, some staff has changed at the county. So it would be good to sort of dust that, uh, MOU off and, and sort of reassert it. Um, so I know we have something already that we've asked for, um, to be notified of any development in the county, but that's in our watershed, that's up, upstream of our water right, so I know we have something like that.
Yeah. All right, that's, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, uh, it's Saipole Tom. Uh, any other questions, comments from the council before I open it up to the public? Seeing none, uh, at this point, any questions from the general public on the general plan? Then we'll move on. All right, seeing none. Um, I feel like we've been, uh, we've had a nice discussion about different elements, uh, different components rather of the land use element. Uh, any further input needed from either Trevor or Cheryl, uh, moving forward with this one view?
No, but I just, um, do keep in mind that if you, you know, as you're reviewing this, as you go through in more detail, if you have comments or questions, you can certainly email those to me individually. And I can, you know, be prepared to include those, um, or address them at, at the next meeting that, that you discuss this.
Right on, thank you so much. All right, and that was, uh, that was a lot of information again, so thank you for that. Uh, we'll move on to item number five, discussion decision regarding water main replacement for the Van Wick area of Trinidad. preamble on this, I appreciate that.
Yes, uh, I can go through a little bit here and I'm not sure if, first of all, I wanted to know if, uh, either, um, Steve from GHD or Becky was on the line, or if Trevor, if you were going to weigh in. Otherwise I can make a short presentation.
I, um, I was going to ask if you want me to stick around for this item. I'm, I, um, I've seen some of the emails, I know a little bit about it, but I, not enough to present it, but I could remain here to answer questions.
Okay, I'll be glad to present it, uh, and then you can help answer questions. And that's in case, uh, either Steve Allen or Becky, uh, is not on. So if either of you is on, uh, speak out, let us know. Uh, so for this item, it's to replace the wa- a water main that was going along Van Wick, which was closed, um, several years ago because it had failed. And it was part of a loop where it connected Van Wick with Edwards. Um, the Edwards water main is four inches and the Van Wick one was six inches. And the intent here is to have a temporary replacement, um, of the Van Wick main, uh, so that we would have sufficient water provided to the southwest end of Trinidad. And that will help us with both CAL FIRE and with the Trinidad Volunteer Fire Department. The estimated cost is somewhere between fifteen thousand and thirty thousand, according to GHD. It would come out of our reserves and, um, basically it would allow for planning and constructing, uh, later on. Yeah, we'll, we'll need to get hopefully a grant, uh, in order to, uh, do about thirty thousand dollars worth of planning and constructing, uh, of the permanent water, uh, main, so for the planning of it. And let's see what else I have here. Yeah, so the temporary repair, um, it would come from the water fund, which has sufficient funds in it. And the permanent water main replacement would then be applied for, uh, possibly through USDA, although there's also Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. They have low interest rates, so there would be a grant of around thirty thousand used to do the planning study for the permanent fix. And then there would be the, um, loan and/or grant, depending on what we're able to find. So, and under staff recommendations, it says to authorize the city engineer to develop the emergency temporary repairs, uh, plan and cost estimate for the city review, which ballpark is fifteen to thirty thousand out of reserves. Authorize the Public Works Director to proceed with the temporary repairs to be paid from the water fund. And then direct staff to pursue funding for pre-development and construction of a permanent water line, which, that would also entail the next item, which is staff to negotiate and execute an agreement with GHD, uh, not to exceed thirty thousand, to develop. And, uh, it would be paid for by the search grant funds. Okay, so is there something that you might want to weigh in on, Trevor, in addition to what I mentioned?
No, I just, um, like I said, I, I saw some of the emails asking about, um, you know, looking at, at a couple of different options, um, for the temporary repair. Um, and that would be looking at a, a line going across the surface of, of where the trail is currently. And so I've been talking to Becky about, you know, the permitting, um, depending on what the project details look like, um, I would need some more information to determine if it needs a permit. It would likely not, uh, it would likely be exempt from CECL though, at least, so that's a good thing.
Okay, that's good, thank you. Um, any questions from the council?
Yeah, Eli?
Yes, Richard?
Just have a question. Um, I know that, that the council had agreed, uh, to pay for, uh, the funds to replace two fire hydrants. What is the status of that replacement?
Yeah, that's going to be moving forward. We signed the contract, uh, for that. And, uh, the firm that received the winning bid was well in construction. And they also signed the contract and sent a copy out to us, to us today. So that should be happening within the next, uh, couple of weeks.
And, and the second, um, at what point, there was a plan with a grant, I think about seven hundred and fifty thousand to repair the Van Wick Trail, or I think it's also called the Harbor Trail. And that ran into difficulties just because of, um, I think jurisdictional disagreements. And it kind of got delayed or fell through. Are there plans to follow up to see whether anything can be done with that grant? Or to come to another, uh, decision to, uh, work out an agreement to get the trail repaired?
Okay, so you're talking about the Van Wick Pedestrian and Connectivity Grant?
Yeah, because of the, that, I thought that potentially the water main supply the six inch could be a part of that repair, uh, and, and development project.
Yeah, that, that's still possible, uh, and GHD will be looking into that. That would be along the lines of the, uh, permanent fix. Um, but as far as that grant, uh, we got an extension, uh, into next year so that, uh, by the end of this year, we're, uh, going to hopefully approve that GHD will draw up the plans for it and then, um, and then have, uh, those plans ready for next year and then have construction done next year. Uh, so that will entail a water main that, uh, could possibly go along Edwards that would be parallel to the existing water main and, uh, and still create, create that loop concept if we're unable to do something along where the Van Wick Trail is. Uh, I think along the Van Wick Trail, we're more likely to do stormwater versus the water main. I, I think the water main will probably be a better fix on Edwards because it's better stable ground.
I think.
Any other questions?
Uh, go ahead, Jack.
Just, um, I'm, I'm just curious, I didn't see how long this temporary, it would take to get the temporary line in place. Is that a pretty quick fix?
Yeah, it won't take that long, uh, so it, it, you know, once we have the approval, uh, from the council, then, uh, you know, we can go ahead and, um, give the okay for GHD to draw up the plans. And then once they draw up the plans, then we can go out to bid.
This should be a one-year fix, right?
It, it should be what?
Just a one-year fix.
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely. Yeah, it's just a, basically a one-year fix until we get the permanent in place.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Davy?
So it's good, will it be replaced with another six-inch water main?
Uh, y- y- yeah, the, the plan is to, uh, have the, uh, new improvement be either six inches or eight inches.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Grover?
Um, yeah, that was kind of my question, but, um, uh, I guess I could add. So we would be getting our reserve money back though, through the search grant, is that what?
Uh, no, the, the reserve funds, this is from the water fund. And so, so for the temporary fix, that would be strictly using it from the water fund. Uh, the search funds will actually allow us, uh, to do the planning for the permanent fix.
Okay.
And they all asked, uh, at this point, I'm going to open it up to the public. Any public questions or comments for us? Go ahead, Bryce? Still on mute, my friend?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Where, where's the pipe that failed in relation to the trail? Is it downhill from the trail or uphill from the trail?
It's basically where the trail is.
It's underneath the trail?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
And, and, uh, just to be clear, the, the line hasn't failed, it's just been turned off in case it fails. Uh, so it's, it's living on borrowed time, it's holding the trail up. Part of it, anyway. Other questions from, uh, the public? All right, uh, seeing one, I'm going to bring it back to the council. Um, at this point, I believe the recommendation from staff is to authorize the city engineer to develop emergency temporary repair plans at a cost, um, and cost estimate for city review. Authorize Public Works Director to proceed with temporary repairs to be paid from the water fund. Correct staff to pursue funding for the pre-development and construction of a permanent line. And authorize staff to negotiate and execute an agreement with GHD not to exceed thirty thousand dollars to develop the, uh, PER to be paid with search grant funds. So that's the recommendation. Do we have a motion, uh, from the council, uh, regarding this agenda item?
So moved, Tom?
A second.
Yep. First from Tom, second from David. All those, uh, let's see, Gabe, could you do roll call, just so we can have it clearly, uh, marked for the record?
Yes, sir, uh, Councilmember Davies?
Aye.
Grover?
Aye.
Vladwig?
Aye.
Uh, Columbus?
Aye.
And West?
Yes.
I'm guessing that's a lot.
Thank you very much. Passes unanimously. Um, move on to, um, item number six, discussion decision regarding government-to-government meeting policy. Uh, let's see, I need to switch back to my packet. Um, we have been given a, a draft, uh, an early draft here of a government-to-government meeting policy, uh, at the request of many folks, um, both in the community and the council. And the, for those of you calling in, the four points in the government-to-government meeting policy, uh, government-to-government meetings are less than a quorum from the city. Uh, no binding actions can be taken. Uh, item number two, agenda for upcoming government-to-government meetings will be, will be provided to the council in advance. All topics discussed at these government-to-government meetings need to be reported out at the next council meeting. And if any actions need to be taken stemming from discussions at government-to-government meetings, those actions will be addressed at a city council meeting on, on the agenda. My only act is that on number four, just that we clarify, uh, uh, that it's an agendized item for disc- uh, for action. But, um, that is the government-to-government, uh, policy, meeting policy. Eli, do you want to add anything to? Eli, do you want to add anything to what we, I just wanted to read it out for those who are on the phone.
Okay, what I'd like to add is, there was some question asked regarding the nature of the committee that would be meeting. And the committee that would be meeting and has been meeting for years is a government-to-government committee that's sometimes referred to as a two-by-two in other jurisdictions. So in other words, it's less than a quorum of the body. It's an advisory committee slash ad hoc committee. And as a result, it constitutes less than the quorum and has neither a continuing scope of business, because when we have the government-to-government meetings, that's why we have that agenda. We determine what those topics are. So it could deal with water, it could deal with stormwater, it could deal with, you know, community, whatever. So it doesn't have a set scope of business, so that makes it exempt from the Brown Act. And also, it doesn't have a set schedule, because whenever it's needed, then the meeting is called. So it's not like we're meeting on a regular monthly basis, or meeting every two weeks, or meeting quarterly. It's just on an as-needed basis. So therefore, it does make it exempt from the Brown Act. And the verbiage from attorney Russ Gans basically says, in order to constitute the ad hoc committee, it must be a limited duration, not have regular meeting schedule, and most important, consists solely of two or fewer council members. And the other quote that he has in here is, a commission, committee board, or other body of the local agency, whether permanent or temporary, decision-making or advisory created by charter, ordinance, resolution, or formal action legislative body. But this is the part where it says, however, advisory committees composed solely of members of the legislative body that are less than the quorum, meaning no more than two, are not legislative bodies, except for standing committees of a legislative body. Irrespective of their composition, which have a continuing subject matter jurisdiction, which this does not have a continuing subject matter jurisdiction, just depends on when the meeting is called, what topics are we going to address. And also, it says where a meeting schedule is fixed by charter, meaning that you're meeting quarterly or meeting monthly, and that's not the case. So therefore, it would be an ad hoc slash advisory committee. So I'll entertain any questions that the council might have.
I have some. So you just read a whole bunch of explanation for justification for having these meetings, and I'm curious as to why none of that was in our packet. I can't, you know, this is not the forum for you to read off things as justification for this. We have never seen this, any of this information.
Well, yeah, I can submit it, and we can have it for the next meeting, that's not a problem. The reason I'm bringing it forward now is that this afternoon, we received a letter from attorney Bryce Kenny, and he brought that, those issues into question. So that's why I wanted to address those issues. It's a letter that stated today's date. So I didn't, when I drew this up and had those four bullet points, I didn't realize that this would be part of the issue, so I thought I'd bring it forward tonight and try to clarify it. And then, in addition to that, this rough draft of four bullet issues, I just put it together, and I wanted to leave it up to the council, you know, whatever you wish to add to that, you know, I would welcome to the bullet points.
Has this been reviewed by our city attorney?
No, no, this hasn't been reviewed yet. I'm just basically putting it out as a shell, where, you know, we can start talking about what we want to have in there. There's nothing that would be, you know, controversial based upon what I said, but either way, yes, we will have it reviewed by the attorney right after we have it in a complete form, after the council has weighed in.
Yeah, I just, I'll reserve comments for later, but it's just, I have a problem with being read things over an internet connection that could have been provided, and it seems like you had all of this stuff. It would have been helpful to have this. I mean, I personally feel that if we're not going to be having a full-fledged discussion on this, this is a waste of everybody's time right now, if we're just taking a shell vote on doing this. We said we wanted a policy. I guess I'm frustrated with this, I'll just talk a little bit more during comments, after I hear other people say.
Yeah, I just wanted to amend one of the bullet points, but I'll wait until public comment.
Okay, Jack? Okay?
I'll wait till public comment's over, thank you.
Richard, questions?
No, I think it would be helpful for the city's attorney to look over, to provide an opinion to the council of what is recommended, so that we could look at it and make a decision based upon a legal opinion.
Okay. Well, it sounds like folks want to hear from the community first, so we'll open it up to folks in the community. Any comments from folks in the community?
This is Jackie from the Rancharia, if I may?
Yes, please.
I think it's very wise to be thoughtful and slow to create the policy. I think that there is a lot of information, depending on who your legal counsel is, or who is advising you. The tribal council also is working on their consultation policy, and I think there's been a lot of misunderstanding that needs to be really considered. One of the things that has been a bit offensive is the reference to backroom decisions and deals being made that are not brought forward to the council. So I think your policy should be really thoughtful about selecting the committee, the ad hoc committee. And I think there needs to be trust. Possibly, has been broken. So I think, you know, the understanding of government-to-government consultation on a local level, on a county level, on a state level, and on a federal level, I think there's a lot of information that you can draw from, in addition to your legal counsel advisement. So I would really caution in moving forward with a policy that's not well thought out. Thank you.
All right, Dorothy, thank you for the comment. Jackie? Other comments from the public?
Yes, this is Shirley Louse.
Go ahead, Shirley.
Okay, thank you. So, much the same thoughts as Jackie. When I first read your draft, my first thought was, it's incomplete, it doesn't address enough, it does need to be worked on. And I compiled some suggested language comments, but until our tribal council finishes their deliberations, I can't submit those to you as public comment yet, because I compiled them as a Rancharia employee. But I can just tell you the sections that I suggested some language for. A definition of tribal consultation to be included, a definition of G to G, because one is part of the other, but yet they're two distinct things. I made a purpose statement, and then some fundamental principles. And I also took the liberty of editing your four points and added a few things there. But as I said, our tribal council will need to vet this suggested language for you, and then send it as an official public comment, or, yeah, public comment, but from the Rancharia, not just myself as an individual employee. So I hope that could help. But the other thing I wanted to mention is, the Rancharia is also involved, and we have been for at least a decade, with the West Coast Ocean Alliance, which it used to be the regional planning body for the national ocean policy, but that was all changed. But we continue to be involved with the group. And there's a tribal caucus as a subcommittee of that group, and over the last eighteen months, the tribal caucus of the West Coast Ocean Alliance worked on a guiding document for tribal consultation, a twenty-page document. It doesn't supersede tribal consultation policy or the actual tribal consultation documents, but it's a guide and a help, it's a guidebook, giving assistance on how to go about tribal consultation for governments. And that was just approved by the member tribes of the West Coast Ocean Alliance, and it was released internally to federal agencies just yesterday. And so I believe it's officially a public document. We have our conference call tomorrow regarding it. And so if it is officially made public, I could share that with you. That might help you formulate some language or help with developing a more full, fully-fledged G to G policy. So I'll check on that tomorrow, and then I utilize that document in drafting my version of public comment. Thank you.
Yeah, and we welcome any input that you have for us, Shirley, so thank you for those comments. Other public comment at this point? Go ahead, Mr. Kenny? Still on mute, sir.
Pardon?
There we go.
You received my letter, so you know what my legal opinion is. I think you're on the right track to table this item for the time being, until you get your own legal opinion. I think in general that, well, I know that there are times when legally you are required to consult with tribes, but there's no general requirement that you, you know, have an ongoing consultation relationship with tribes. And it's really fundamental to state and local government that all the government's business be conducted out in the open. It's not necessarily the case for the government that you're meeting with, so I can see the temptation to kind of, you know, move into the direction of doing it their way, but you have to remember, you're bound by California law. And even if you aren't, you could set a policy, regardless of whether the Brown Act compels you to do it, you could do it because you believe in open government, and you think that Trinidad should always conduct its business in the public. So just because the Brown Act creates a floor, it doesn't create the ceiling as far as what you could adopt for Trinidad's policy. So I'll be very interested in seeing what your attorney thinks about this, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other comments from the public? Looks like Richard is speaking. No? Okay. There you go.
Okay, yes, this is Richard Harris. The, one of the, there are a couple of points raised in Bryce Kenny's letter at page two, which is, it's not only the Brown Act, the California Constitution, Article One, Declaration of Rights. And that discussion is in the middle of page two. Is very strongly for open meetings, and it says that any statute or other authority is to be considered broadly if it furthers open meetings, and narrowly if it limits access. So city manager is raising the issue of, is this or is this not a standing committee? The continuing issue that this committee is dedicated to is the relationship between the city and the Rancharia. And under the statute cited, the legislative body has this continuing subject matter jurisdiction of the relationship between the city and the Rancharia. And so that is, that is how that this is, a standing committee. And that will be one of the issues that you will be consulting with legal counsel on. Mr. Kenny has set forth in two letters to you some detail on this area, and encourage you to look at that closely and pass it on through your attorney, and get good advice on that. Thank you very much, folks. These are interesting and important issues, and appreciate your time on them.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. And Ms. Hossen will see your chat, so I will make sure we give you space. Other comment from the general public? All right, Ms. Hossen, from you, is now a good time to weigh in?
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that this is not just between the city of Trinidad and the Trinidad Rancharia. This would be an overall consultation policy that would include other tribal governments and tribal organizations. So I believe that the subject matter jurisdiction, making it a standing committee, is open to interpretation. I think the information or advice from legal counsel needs to be thoroughly vetted in research from an Indian law perspective. So you may want to reach out beyond your legal counsel if you just don't have Indian law expertise. So I believe that the city is in a good process to fully vet a tribal consultation policy, but again, I encourage a very robust process in looking at various information and advisors as you deliberate this decision. So it would not just be for the Trinidad Rancharia. That was my clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Moving it back to council, many of the council said they wanted to hear public comment before they made further comments. So, Mr. Grover?
Yes, it sounds like, from what I'm hearing here, this is at the beginning stages, and it looks like a good start. One of my comments was on bullet point two, agenda provided for council and for the public at large in advance, because it seems like there's an issue about knowing what's being taught. Because it seems like there's an issue about knowing what's being talked about there by the public too, which is that. So and the other one was a possible keeping fresh perspectives because of what a standing committee is. And, you know, if there's a rotation or something between council, that is something that Eli could look into. You know, if that determines what type of a meeting it is to. Because I know that this is very detailed and I did read Mr. Kenny's letter twice and it's a lot to it and a lot of good points. So I don't want to gloss over anything. So that's all I have for now.
Okay. I believe you're on mute, sir.
All right, how about? So first off, I'd like to say I agree with Jackie that this should just, this should not be geared towards government-to-government meetings with only the Rancharia. There are other tribal governments in the area that we may need to consult with at some point in the future. And it would behoove us to have a policy that would cover in general all tribal consultation. I have, I believe this is a very important topic and we're, you know, we will be having government-to-government meetings. And I am just all about making sure this process is fair to everyone and transparent to everyone. I don't have a problem with the government-to-government meetings if they're done in the context of transparency as far as the city of Trinidad can provide for its citizens. I do have, I want to take issue with what was said earlier about that this is not a standing committee. A working group language in this meeting policy. We have had the mayor and the mayor pro tem and the city council or the city manager attending these meetings. These are the only people that have been attending these meetings. So that seems, in my non-legal opinion, so I'd be happy to hear some legal opinion. It seems like a standing committee to me. It seems like these meetings were happening almost every month, which is a fairly regular basis. But I'm not, I don't know because they weren't always reported out on and I needed to keep asking if it happened and what was discussed. I agree with David on item two, if we're rewarding things, the agenda needs to be provided to the council and the public. So invited, the public needs to know in advance. And I think that these should not be special meetings where it's only 24-hour advance notice required. I think it should be a standard meeting notice, 72 hours minimum. And I agree with Steve Ladwig. He said earlier on item three, or maybe it was four, but in either case, I would like, this needs to be a agenda. As we report out, I don't think it should just be part of the report. I think it should be an agenda item as we move forward in this policy. But I do think this should be tabled tonight. I think we need some, I think we need a clear vision of this. I think we need legal input. I think it's a good idea to maybe consult more than just our city attorney, as was suggested. And I think that's all I have to say on this matter. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Webb?
I appreciate what Jack and Shirley have brought into this. I think that's really important that we get their involvement. They're going to help clarify a lot of the things that we've done. I want to just clarify that the mayor and I have sort of been volunteered to go to these because we felt, I think we just were, I don't think this is closed to anybody else, but we did open it up and it was nice that we had the kind of a, someone that was going to, was there when these meetings took place because we had a little background. But that was not necessarily mayor, pro tem, mayor and city manager at the same time. So I mean, that could be easily changed. And I think, and I think it would be wise that we do get other people a chance to go to these meetings. I also think they've been very important for the city. And I think that as we, we've got to be very careful, I think, about how many restrictions we put on this, how difficult we make it for the tribes to also be able to work with us. And especially, especially the, also, excuse me, especially the also the Uro tribe. We want to make an attempt to try to work with the tribes. They have important information. It's a way we, we can make sure the city and the tribes are working together. I think, I think Tom's got the right idea. We need to have more, more of open meetings. Open in the sense of knowing agendas so they, we can find out in advance. We make sure that we're doing good reporting. And I think that's been weak. But I think government-to-government meetings as they are, are important, not only for us to be able to get information and be able to work with the tribes, but also making it so the tribes can work with us easily. The meetings are important. They get a lot of information for us to bring back to the council. And as far as I can remember, all the meetings have been very informational and trying to help us, help guide our policies so we can work together. And we're supposed to bring things back to the council. We can make no decisions, but it's our way of getting information from council to city and city to council. So I, I would hope that we can come up with a rounded, a really nice idea that would work with both of the tribal councils that we usually work with in order to make agreements and be able to continue working with them on a regular basis. It is, I think it's been very beneficial to the city. So, yeah, well, that's my opinion about what we've been doing. So hopefully that helps a little bit.
Thank you. Mr. Caucus?
Yes, you know, I'd love to see progress made in developing an open line of communication with our neighbors. And what seems to be most important is the legal framework of how these conversations can take place so that both parties feel that they can communicate openly. So to me, I think an effort should be made to find out what is the best legal framework to have the conversations and then to move forward and establish open lines of trustworthy communication so that everyone can be informed as to what our needs are and what feedback is and how we can work with each other to make this area even better than what it is now.
Thank you. And if I could finish, so I'm definitely hearing that we want to continue this discussion. So no decision needs to be made tonight. I kind of want to take it in an additional direction, not, not a different direction, but an additional direction. And these government-to-government meetings are really, the spirit of them is to be a nimble group that can come together and put our heads together to discuss different projects, different issues that we're facing in a smaller sort of nimble manner. So not trying to bypass the Brown Act, not trying to do anything other than develop relationships. Really, this is about developing relationships. And I really want to reiterate what both Jackie and Shirley said is that really what we're facing here is a perception issue, that there are no, there's no reason to make any decisions behind the scenes and without, without input. We have to, not have to, we need to, we need to work in a way that is transparent. And so there's no reason to get away with anything. This is just a small group. If you've been in any organization where you form smaller working groups or committees or whatever you want to call them, a smaller group can get a lot more done, always reporting back out for more input. This, just like the Planning Commission reports out to the city, looks for direction and then goes back to work. There's all these checking balances in play, and that's really what we're trying to accomplish here. So I certainly welcome the formalization of a policy. I just want to remind folks that what we're trying to accomplish here is partnership. This is nothing more than a partnership to work together on issues that are different entities overlap, that are different interests overlap. And it's also just a great way to meet folks. And so I welcome the inclusion of council members who want to participate in these government-to-government meetings. Perhaps there's an issue that you have an expertise in or an interest in that you want to get involved. And so we can certainly move in that direction as well. So that would be part of the policy, I imagine, is the inclusion of all council members who have access to these government-to-government meetings. So I'm going to move forward from here. Thank you very much for your input, everybody. We do want to now reach out to legal. I believe there's been an offer from Ms. Laus from the Rancharia to include some of her thoughtful comments that she embedded with her counsel. And so we'll continue to benefit from each other's expertise and perspectives and bring this back to the council at a later time. So thank you very much for that. Now we have two more items. The last, second to the last item is the discussion decision to reinstate additional half-time deputy sheriff position. So Eli, if you could give us a short background on this one and take it away.
Okay, so regarding this item, we used to have a half-time deputy sheriff position in addition to our regular deputy sheriff. And it was tied to the Measure Z funding. And for the last two years, we have not been approved with Measure Z funding, primarily because the sheriff's department has not had additional deputies available. However, the city of Blue Lake has a second deputy position that they're willing to share with Trinidad, where we each would get one half deputy. So although there are no Measure Z funds available for this budget year, we're suggesting that we use reserve funds for this year to take advantage of the half-time deputy sheriff position, which is available. We will be reapplying for Measure Z funds for next year for the half-time position. And then also, next week, we're going to start our negotiations with the sheriff's department for our long-term contract with the full-time deputy. And then it's basically a suggestion to the council that they approve the half-time deputy sheriff position and utilize reserves for the costs, which is estimated to be around 80 or 85,000. And I'll entertain any questions from the council.
If I could, there's a, there's a comment that came from our grant officers and our accountant that says that the city of Trinidad's eligibility for grants is often so there's a sort of a secondary benefit to spending down. We have a very healthy reserve right now. And this is a secondary benefit of using some of that reserve for priorities that the city has identified is it actually turns out to make us more eligible for grants in the future. So I just wanted to kind of add that element in our consideration. So questions or comments for Eli on this agenda item? Jack?
Just a, well, Eli, when would this start and what would be the year that we would have this meeting?
Yeah, this would be starting probably around beginning of August. And it would be for the remainder of this fiscal year until July 1st of 2021.
Great.
Richard?
So just to make sure that I'm clear, we have a 140-hour full-time officer assigned to Trinidad. This would be adding another 50% time of a second officer. Am I correct, Eli?
Yes, that's correct. The 20 hours and the additional officer, when I started, they've had an additional officer for at least the last few years, then they were using Measure Z funds. And then when the Measure Z funds were no longer available, well, not only were they not available, the deputies were not available. They didn't have enough deputies to provide us for the Measure Z funding. So therefore, they didn't give us Measure Z funding. But since this opportunity has arisen, sharing a second deputy position where half would go to Blue Lake and half with us, I thought it was a good opportunity.
And does the council feel that there's a need to add a second part-time officer or this 50% time? Is it something that the community needs that's not covered by the current full-time officer?
Well, at least I could answer that. And that is because the full-time officer works 10 hours a day. So basically, he's here for four days. And although we're covered by McKinleyville the rest of the time, I think it really would be essential to have a, an officer here two more additional days, even if it's not all seven.
Got it. Thank you.
Tom?
Thanks. Would we be able to discuss when the scheduling would be? This has been kind of a sticking point in the past. I'm in support of this. And I know the community from past meetings have been in support of more law enforcement. But it's kind of critical that we get the law enforcement here during times when some kind of enforcement is actually needed and it's not generally not needed, you know, like between, you know, certain early, you know, nine to 12 or something like that in the morning. Or do we have any control over this schedule?
I'll find out a little bit better next week with the deputies when I'm talking to the captain and the lieutenant. But in talking with Blue Lake, it seems like it would be possible to have them when we would like. So I would just, would want to confirm that next week. But, but yes, I do would like to have a couple more days covered that we don't have covered.
I have one question or comment. If that's the case, I wonder, I'm wondering if it would be helpful if the sheriff's department could help us look at call records, et cetera, as to when they believe someone would be most effective in our, in our community, using some beta rather than some, you know, suppositions by, by people.
Sure, I will run that by them when I meet with them next Wednesday.
Thank you. That's all I have.
David, I think I saw your hand up? Maybe not. Okay, Richard?
Nope.
Good. Okay.
Thank you.
Now let's open this up for public comment. We're down to just a handful of folks, but any public comment on this?
Hello, this is Katrin Hohmann again. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Katrin.
So I'm also aware of many members in the community that have requested additional deputies, especially during this COVID time. And I am just wondering if some of that grant money, the $50,000 that were mentioned earlier, if that could be used for a deputy, some of that money. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, I'll answer that. It's actually part of the staff report. And the last two sentences of staff report said that the city will be receiving $50,000 from the CARE Act funds for COVID-19-related expenses. And that a portion of each deputy's cost, meaning the full-time and the part-time, can be reimbursed as it relates to COVID-19 enforcement. So that will give us an opportunity to spend a part of that $50,000 because if we don't spend all $50,000 by the end of the year, we have to return it. And I see Lieutenant Kevin Miller's on the line, so I, maybe he has some comments. Or Ken Miller.
Or maybe not. Okay. Yeah, I definitely want to reiterate comments I've heard earlier that over the nearly four years I've been on the council, this has been a very, very consistent need that the residents have shared, that they want more presence of law enforcement. And I really am I, I really am cautiously hopeful and optimistic that the fact that we had a sheriff here during prime time on the Fourth of July, for the first time in my four years on the council, gives me hope that there is some, someone listening when we say when we want deputies here. I agree that from nine to twelve in the morning is probably not a very good use of our, of our taxpayer money. And so it sounds like there's a great willingness to work with us on the schedule for those extra two shifts. So I am very much in support of utilizing city resources to have more law enforcement here. So at this point, I would entertain a motion regarding this agenda item.
I'll make a motion that we approve the halftime deputy sheriff position. Second?
First and second, at this point, we're all on camera, so we can do a vote. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you very much. Passes unanimously. Our final agenda item is the November election schedule and upcoming deadline. Mr. Napa?
Okay, so I'll just introduce it briefly and then turn it over to the city clerk, since the city clerk actually handles our elections. So we have the November election coming up. And for that election, we're going to have a ballot measure, which will be for sales tax. And we're also going to have two, actually three, three council positions that are up for election. And the period for those elections just opened yesterday, and it will remain open until Friday, August 7. So I'll turn it over to Gabe, our city clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Napa. Just wanted to put, as an ongoing reminder in our packets for the community, for the council, to know what we're getting into, a pretty significant part of our election process. We've passed a few milestones in the recent, in the past, in the past couple of months. But we are now at the time where some significant notifications are made through the community. As City Manager just mentioned, the election notice will be published, and has been published, as a matter of fact, in locally on our website and also in the local press, stating that there are the three seats available, two seats for four-year terms and one seat for a two-year term. Nomination period for candidates open on, opened actually yesterday and closes August 7. The city clerk's office is responsible for distributing the nomination packets, the candidate packets. And we don't just post them publicly. We actually request that the community at least reaches out to us so we know who has the packets and we get close to deadlines, such as when the period closes. We want to make sure that we have a tab on who's submitting papers because there are a minimum of ten signatures, they call them nomination signatures, from the community that's required. And we have to verify that those community members that have been listed on their nomination papers are indeed registered voters in the community. So those candidate packets are and will be available. We also have, I'm also publishing a notice of arguments for and against the sales tax measure. There, let's see, the deadline is Friday, August 12. So typically, at this point in time, in the election process, we were lucky to have the impartial analysis from the city attorney from years ago, which is very adequate still to this day. And that impartial analysis is included in the voter information packet. I also have all the records from arguments for the measure, which are included in, in the information, voter information. If, might would be a good opportunity to take a, just to reach out to all of you to determine if anyone wants to, any council member specifically, wants to work with staff, or just work together or independently, and taking a stab at writing an argument for the measure included in that voter information package. So that's something that's on the list that would be, you know, maybe something to discuss here before we close this meeting out tonight. And, and in the rest, in the staff report, it shows the rest of the deadlines coming up. August is pretty much the end month. And then at that point, we cruise to the election in November. So with that said, I'm happy to entertain any questions, but this is mainly informational. But as far as the notice, as far as the arguments for the sales tax measure, I'd like to hear if anyone would be interested in working with me or the city manager to develop those arguments.
So who was that?
I would, I would like to do that.
Sounds good. Gabe, I have a question on the, in the packet of, and you mentioned that there are three seats available, but I was under the assumption that there were only two that needed to run through the election because Dwight had served out a particular proportion of his, his appointment. Is that not the case?
Well, yeah, no, that is the case. Dwight's seat is clear. And I'm glad you brought this up because I'll, I'll reiterate this once again. The way the elections office and I, we've been discussing this lately, and it was the seat that was left vacant by former council member Jim Baker. He had only served, and I don't even know if he served at all, but he really was only a member of the council for four months after he was elected. So the difference between his resignation and Miller's resignation was timing. So the elections code states that if you resign or if you leave the council before a certain period, then your replacement can be appointed. However, at the next general election, which was a little over a year and a half coming, which is this November, that seat, if there's more than X amount of years left, needs to be essentially confirmed. So for instance, it's Councilmember Grover, whose seat is the third seat. And he took it for Baker, and his name, the way the elections department said, called it, they said there's basically three contests, is how they described it. And they will be identified separately on the ballot. So there will be two four-year seats that the voters will be able to, you know, select a candidate for, and then one two-year seat. And I have to be very clear when people pick up candidate packets, I have to make sure they understand and they know which contest they're running for. So that's where the, that's where that third seat comes from.
Okay. Thank you for that. I was, I, I've forgotten that David took over for Jim with that timing issue and how it played out. So thank you for that.
My, my name will be the two-year guy then, right, on the ballot itself?
Yeah, you'll be, you'll effectively be the incumbent. Now, we'll need to get your packet, you know, we'll have to have you submit a packet. And I can, I can help you as I help anyone from the community with those papers and making sure you have everything you need to get, to get your name on that ballot, and you can be listed as the incumbent.
Right. But I could get the seat taken, but they would only serve two years, then they would have to run again, right?
Exactly.
Okay. All right.
Other questions for either Gabe or Eli? See, how about from, from the community? Pretty straightforward. So it sounds like we have Mr. Grover is going to work with Eli and Gabe on developing an argument for the sales tax. Otherwise, we'll publish, or it's been, it's been published that the filing period is now open for the three empty seats, or three seats that will empty come November. So we don't really have any action.
No, no. It's an opportunity to get some press, if anyone's listening from the press, you know, to, to get the word out that the city's, city's got some seats available. And then can I, I'll mention one other thing. I received a really nice phone call from a gentleman named Ken Swatzky. He is a representative of the Humble, Eli, Eli, correct me if I'm wrong, is it the Humboldt County Taxpayers League?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. And he voiced his support for the city's measure, which I think was brought up at the last meeting before we decided to move forward with this. But he also offered some of his associates over there to help, hope, offer a argument for the measure with the city, which I thought was pretty remarkable. I don't think I've ever heard of that. So, so anyway, that's something.
I would like to add to Gabe's comment. So yes, that is very welcome, and that's not something that has happened in the past. However, Kent had indicated that he took that information about our sales tax measure to his committee, and the Taxpayers League is in support of it. So they will make that statement and support us. And in addition to that, the fact that Kent had indicated that the Taxpayers League is looking for what they call a tax that is a fair tax and, and not taxes that are, you know, unreasonable. And he felt that our tax, supporting our city, being a small city, and having that sales tax revenue is something that they could support. And also the fact that we kept it at three quarters of a cent, of a percent, rather, three quarters percent, rather than increasing it to, to one percent. So those were the reasons that they felt that we have a tax that is complementing our community, and as a result, would be something that they thought was fair and they could support.
Very good. So we have our election, and we will close this discussion section of the meeting and talk about future agenda items based on our discussion on the land use and the drought contingency. It's clear that we need to start discussing ordinances. And I would recommend that we either begin an STR ordinance review. I know the planning commission has their hands full. I'm wondering if we don't, if we can't do that ourselves, or is that something that has to go through the planning commission, the STR ordinance review? It's been on the sort of recommended list of actions from the STR Advisory Committee. What's your thought on that, Eli, on pushing that to the council, or do we push that to the planning commission?
Yeah, it's, it, it basically shows that it would go to the planning commission. But as was mentioned by Trevor, since we have the STR committee, they're not meeting till September, but I could, you know, request, maybe if they want to have a special meeting. And, and as a result, maybe they could address a few issues that they think would be helpful, and then pass that on to the planning commission. The planning commission should look at the ordinance as a whole, go through it section by section, see what additional things should be added, what things should be changed, and then make a recommendation to the council.
Okay. Well, let's, let's put that in motion. And not to unnecessarily add to the workload of the advisory committees, they already have plans to meet in September. I just wanted to kind of keep that on the radar. And then I think we need some sort of council action on recommendations coming out of the drought contingency and starting to discuss ways to invest in our water capacity. Some take, there's quite a number of things that we should, as a council, discuss, and because some of them have a fairly significant price tag associated with them. So I think we should have some recommendations on, on where to invest in our water, either capacity or storage or whatever it is, as a, as a very near future, near agenda item. David?
Yeah, I did reach out to Supervisor Madrone, too, and he's going to get back to me. I know he's really busy, you know, too, but about doing some things. Because I did do ArcMap, I can do digital elevation maps, and I really want to get going on the physical engineering of the reasonability and feasibility of water catchments, as he described it. He seems to be the most knowledgeable hydrologist in the area, as far as I know. I mean, he's got the, he's got the degrees and the experience. So I want to, you know, get what I can from him when he, when he gets the chance.
I just, I know we've received over the, the last, oh, two years maybe, lots and lots of individual recommendations, but also a lot of recommendations keep surfacing over and over and over, investing in the plant, looking at different, different ways to increase our capacity. So I think, I think we need to start focusing our attention on that. But other agenda items that folks want to see at our, what is this, July, at our August meeting?
Yes.
Richard?
Yeah. So I, I really appreciate the opportunity to, to be on the council. If, if this was a, a normal time without COVID-19, I'd say let's have a town hall meeting to understand what is on the mind of Trinidad residents. What would they like to see happen? What are, what are their concerns? What is top of mind about the, the city itself? And because we can't do that, to me, the next best thing would be simply to create a very simple survey on paper that could be mailed out. I could create questions with Eli, I could present it back to the council next month. And the concept would be, what's on your mind? What are your concerns? So that the council could be better educated. And we could also request at the same time, if they'd be willing to give us their email address, so that future surveys could be done much more quickly and with less fanfare and, and kind of over the internet. So my suggestion for a future agenda item would be to create a framework to do a survey with the residents of Trinidad to kind of find out what's top of mind. And hopefully, that would help the council in future activities or areas that they didn't, were not aware of that may be of concern.
That works for me. Other agenda item? And Eli, please, and Gabe, too, if there are things that we need to be mindful of that are sort of time-sensitive, please let us know if there are things that we need to address in the August meeting. Okay. Well, as you, as you ruminate on these different items, please let us know, and we will make sure to get that in the next meeting. I believe at this point, are meeting, any closing comments from folks?
Yeah. Welcome to the council, Richard.
Thank you.
Yes, welcome, Richard. Thank you for your, your civil service. And I now officially close the meeting. It's adjourned.
Yeah, everyone.
See you.
Bye. Bye.